This meeting to order, it is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, held December 16th, 2014 at 6:00 PM. City, or Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Howey?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pfeiffer?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, so the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have Gunner Tillmans, who's an alternate on the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Gunner's gonna come up and get his certificate, but I'd just like to share that he was selected this year as an alternate for the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, and he also is a very accomplished horseman, and he also is a horse trainer, and he learned these skills when he attended Orm School last year, so he has lots of talents, and he's a very good friend of mine.
So on behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, we'd like to present this certificate to you. Thank you.
Okay, next item is a brief summary of current events by the Mayor, City Council, and/or City Manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, I really don't have anything to report on the city tonight. I am proud to tell people that today is my 42nd wedding anniversary.
Wow, congratulations.
The quicker we can get to the meeting...
You can go out for dinner.
...that starts to be for me. That's it, Madam Mayor.
You can go romanceing, huh? Okay, so, Councilmembers. Okay, my report is we're moving ahead with the Focus on Success Five-Year Economic Development Plan, and the TAC met on December 3rd, and Casey is working real hard, and Judy Scalise on this plan, and there was a lot of input. We had a lot of good attendance at the last meeting, and we even had Keith Watkins from the Arizona Commerce Authority, and he had a lot of great ideas, so I was happy to see him. Kids at Hope met on December 4th, and Hezekiah Allen and Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission President Charles Novak both attended, and we're just working on lots of things. We're hoping Mingus did a survey, and it kind of deals with our students, and whether they feel hopeful about their futures, and hoping that Kids at Hope and the philosophy of believing that every child should succeed without exception will be helpful in raising some of those scores. I met with Casey Rooney and Darcy Renfo from Speak Out Arizona, and previously, Darcy served as a policy advisor to Governor Janet Napolitano, and she did economic development and higher education, so it was really great to meet her, a very accomplished person, and she's working with the Arizona We Want Institute and Speak Out Arizona on a plan of what Speak Out Arizona wants to do, and they were originally with the Sandra Day O'Connor Foundation, but they're kind of moving over now to this. So they're still trying to figure out ways of how to get public participation, how to get the public to participate in government. We had a meeting with the Pressview Neighborhood on the 8th, and we had quite a long agenda. They had lots and lots of questions. Some of the things we discussed were signs, they wanted another HOA sign in their neighborhood, and the City Manager was making those arrangements. They had a few questions about the 12th Street Project and some lighting. Actually, they really wanted a whole bunch of lighting in their neighborhood, but you know how it is, when you propose that in Cottonwood, you get just as many who don't want lighting in the neighborhood, so it was a good discussion to have. And then they asked about the rest of the street, and the staff updated them. They asked about the date, street extension, and we really, Council doesn't have that in a plan yet. So, they wanted more big box stores, and they would like an enclosed mall. So, those are just things that people in the community would like to see, and something for us to think about for the future. We met with the contractors this past week, just Baron Najad, our Community Development Manager, did a fantastic job of talking about working together, being a team, and not having it be us versus them, and so I thought it was a really great meeting, and really, she facilitated it very well. We also met with Terry Campbell and Steve Hastings. Terry Campbell's project is the Highland Square Project over on Mingus and Candy, and that project has been approved, and they really want to thank the Council who approved supporting that in any way that we could, and he really thinks that made the difference in them getting that tax credit loan. So that project is with planning and zoning and Baron Najad's department. The String of Pearls met on the 11th, and the geotourism project has been, I guess contracts are just completed, and this will be the Sustainable Tourism Advisory Council, there will be one created, or maybe there is one already. I'm not on it, so I'm not sure. And they will provide input to the strategic marketing process, help the tourism council use tools to maximize potential, and later provide input for the geotourism marketing program. And our communities' development directors, Casey and Jody, and Steve Ayers, Steve Ayers has really taken the lead on this quite a bit, so, well, that'll be a neat project. The town of Clarkdale recently developed a proposal for establishing capacities for the Verde River at Clarkdale, and Gail emailed the draft to the group, and it's been mentioned in the paper also. But they are looking at, I guess, putting some sanctions on capacity, because you just can't... The project's been wildly successful, and so there's maybe kind of like more people than the area can hold, so they were actually having a meeting tonight, their council is having a joint meeting with their Parks and Rec Commission to talk about this, and then in January, their council will vote on it, I guess. So there would be permitting and fees for any outfitters, they're looking at long-term approaches. What else can I tell the council? And they're looking at coordination across all river jurisdictions, and that will be important in the future. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Mixer at the Verde Valley Senior Center, and Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor was there, former Councilmember Linda Norman, and it was a lot of fun. It's at the Verde Valley Senior Center, and that one's always something that I look forward to. Saturday, I attended Shop with a Cop, and that was a lot of fun. I think we really need to say thank you to Chief Fanning and all of his staff, and those who collaborate with the Sheriff's Office, all the other cities and towns, municipalities, state parks, since officers, Game and Fish, I think, had someone there, so it's really a collaborative effort, and it's great to see the children's smiles. Some of these kids probably won't get many toys for Christmas, so thank you, Chief Fanning, for your department and all that you do. Then I traveled to Chino Valley the same day for my cousin's granddaughter's wedding shower, and you really know you're getting old when the mothers of the bride look awfully And then I rushed back to the Verde Valley to attend the Yes, They Are Holiday event, and this was their 40th anniversary celebration, and they really did an awesome play this time. It was about hats, and then Penny Spillman, who some know her as Penny Young, some know her as Penny Vehill, she's now Penny Spillman, has been doing this, helping this segment of our population for 40 years, and she was recognized, and she has done just an amazing job with all of the developmentally disabled people, that she has helped have just everyday lives like everyone else. And then I was invited to attend the Christmas Potluck at Evangel Worship Center, and there was delicious food, and each family decorates their table, and it was quite enjoyable. Tomorrow, I'll be doing a tour with the City Manager, Casey Rooney, Lana Tolleson from the Chamber, and some other folks, and we were invited by David Hirsch of Goodwill to tour some of the facilities of Goodwill, and to learn how they provide jobs in our community. And after that, Councilmember, Congressman Paul Gosar, his staff contacted me that he will be in town, he'll be touring the hospital, I believe, and then wanted to have me arrange lunch, so I pulled together someone from, I thought our City Manager could do economic development, and the hospital, and Dr. Ty from the school, so we'll kind of have a broad section from the community. So that's my report for today. Moving on, anybody else think of something in the meantime? Okay, moving on to introduction of new employees. Chief Fanning.
Madam Mayor, thank you very much, Councilmembers. It's my honor and pleasure tonight to introduce you to three of our newest employees, two of them are communications systems, are communication specialists, and one of them is a police officer, and I'll start with the communication specialists. First is Chelsea Shepherd. Please stand up. Chelsea started with the Cottonwood Police Department on November 17th. Prior to joining the Cottonwood Police Department, Chelsea worked as a hairstylist. She's originally from Kentucky?
Yes.
Really? That got by me on the background, anyhow. But went to high school in Avondale, okay, that's how she made it, okay. In the Phoenix area, Chelsea lives here in the Cottonwood area with her fiance, Damon, who is also one of our applicants for police officer, and will probably be someday, but he is currently now a YCSO deputy. She lives up here because her grandmother is a hairstylist in Camp Verde, and she loves the weather here and enjoys fishing, hiking, exercising, and yes, making people look their best, especially in terms of haircuts and coloring. Chelsea is learning her job very quickly and is a great addition to the Cottonwood Police Department, and we are very happy to have her as a part of the team. This is Chelsea.
Oh, thanks, chief.
So you have a big opportunity to say a few words if you would like to.
I think he took all my words. I don't know how he got all that.
He just took your thunder, huh?
Yes.
Well, everyone in the 911 call center will now be extreme, they were always beautiful, but they're going to be extremely beautiful now, right?
Well, thank you. Thanks for letting me work with the city, guys.
Thank you for serving...
They make fun of me all the time.
You gotta laugh, right?
Yes, that's right.
Well, thank you for serving the citizens of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley.
The next one is Cassie Bailey. Cassie also joined us on November 17th. Before Cassie started, she was a CNA for our Certified Nursing Assistant. Cassie lives here in Cottonwood, she was raised here in Cottonwood, she is a Cottonwood resident, Mingus graduate, a state champion soccer player, and an extremely good softball player. Currently not doing a lot of softball or soccer, but she lives with her mother and father. Her father's a firefighter, but she's decided to be a police dispatcher too, so we're doing okay with that. She likes doing the fire dispatch, but I've known Cassie for many years. She loves the outdoors. She is a self-proclaimed artiste, acquiring her, I don't know, your boss wrote...
Who's that? Two of us do.
Yeah. Acquiring her inspiration from her creations from Pinterest.
Okay.
And she loves the small-town atmosphere, and she will be adding a new citizen to Cottonwood on January 9th?
Yep.
January 9th, a baby girl, so.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
I don't really have anything to say, you said everything. But thank you for the opportunity to work for the city, I really enjoy it.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to the citizens of Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. We appreciate that. Thank you, chief.
And last is Officer Matt Strickland.
Okay, still your department, all right.
Yes. Matt has actually been with us for a long time, but we don't typically introduce them until they get back from the academy, and they've been through the FTO program for a while. So Matt actually started with us in April, so it's been a while, but he's been absent because he's been gone to the police academy. He is now almost completed with his FTO program, two weeks left on his FTO program?
Yes.
And for citizens, FTO means?
Field Training Officer.
Field Training Officer.
Eighteen weeks of the academy, and then additional 14 weeks of FTO total?
Yes.
Okay.
So before they're allowed out on the streets, or before they're put out there by themselves, not allowed, before they're put out there by themselves. He's 28 years old, he's married, very happily married to Amber Lee Strickland, has a one-year-old McKenna, and expecting a baby number two in June. He grew up in Camp Verde, he lives in, very near to my dad. My dad tells him stories all the time, which is making me a little bit nervous, because he's learning more about me than I'm learning about him.
Thanks, Dad.
Yeah. He graduated from Camp Verde High School in 2004, he went to Sterling College in Kansas, where I understand that he was a rather efficient, or very good, baseball player. So, he and his wife enjoy camping, fishing, road trips, and visits to California, and he's an avid Diamondsbacks fan. Officer Matt Strickland.
All right, welcome.
Yep.
Well, thank you for serving the citizens of Cottonwood. Council considers that a very important job, so we appreciate you. You're welcome. All right, presentations, recognition of the Moose Lodge's Emergency Personnel Appreciation Awards recipients. We recently had several, I guess, three folks from our fire and police departments who were recognized by the Moose Lodge, and I asked staff to put this on the agenda, and I think the City Manager has, are you gonna, are you gonna present it, or do you want, do you want someone else to do that? I can do it actually myself if you'd like.
I can go ahead and do it, Mayor, if you'd like.
Okay.
Unless you were at the Moose Lodge that night.
You know, that's, I wasn't. Somehow my calendar got goofed up, and I wasn't there, and I really feel guilty, and so I asked, you know, what happened, and found out about this, and wanted to make sure that they were recognized by council and our public for these very nice write-ups really about what they do.
Yes, and this is not uncommon. I mean, we get great support for our public safety services from a variety of service organizations in the community, and this particular one was by the Moose Lodge, number 1449, and this was their first annual Emergency Personnel Appreciation Award Dinner on November 15th of this year. And what they did is they recognized each of our service, emergency services agency in the Verde Valley, and so other agencies were recognized as well. They honored a police officer from Cottonwood, a communication specialist, and a firefighter. And they also looked at, recognized the Verde Valley Ambulance Company and the EMT or Paramedic of the Year. For the City of Cottonwood, they selected engineer Larry Wright.
Who's with us tonight?
Who's in the back there, and if you could come up, Larry. Also Officer Heidi Dever as Police Officer of the Year.
Madam Mayor, she was not able to attend tonight because of a prior engagement.
Okay, thank you.
And then our own Marie Carpenter, who received Communication Specialist of the Year. And again, for any of those who work in the city and know these individuals, they are great representatives of the city, and certainly is understandable why they were selected by the Moose Lodge for these awards this year. So, my congratulations, and...
We're very proud of them.
...present them to the City Council for recognition as well.
Okay, so, we'd like to see your plaques. Very nice. And so we would like to get a photo of you and the Chiefs and the City Manager. If you...
Here, if you'll see.
Oh, wow, look at that. That is very nice. Very nice. And I did email Mike Liggett to see if he wanted to be here tonight, but I don't think he does email, and I just emailed the Moose Lodge, so he probably doesn't know yet.
He went all out.
Rogan.
We are very proud of you, very proud. Okay, the next item is called to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll close the floor to the public. On the approval of the minutes, I just had one, I just have to comment about one thing, because I found it a little bit humorous as I was reading along. I just have to get there. Okay, so, whoops. Oh, I wanted to just make a small correction, and I'm sorry, Matt, these little things sometimes I let you know, but I was reading these at 4 o'clock tonight. But on page two of the December 2nd meetings, it said that I attended the Christmas Parade on Saturday, and I think I probably meant that I was going to attend the Christmas Parade on Saturday rather than had attended it, because this was December 2nd and the parade was the 6th. That was my first clue. But, down here, so, anyway, we were discussing the fire department, and I had compared the old code with the new code, so I was like trying to let council know, well, this is what the old code said, this is the new, and is that okay with you? And like Jesse's doing now, and the Vice Mayor, I got a lot of non-verbal communication, so I knew you were all okay with it. But, so as we went along, you're all shaking your heads, the Vice Mayor, she moves her eyes, and so I was like, okay, everybody's good with these changes, but the minutes say, and of course they would, there was no response from the council. So, it's kind of funny, I have this long dialogue in here, monologue, and it doesn't sound like the council responded, but you really did. And that can't be fixed, because note-takers can't do non-verbal communication. But anyway, other than that, I read all of them, and they look good to me, and so I would make a motion to approve the minutes of, get back to the meeting of December 2nd... And so I would make a motion to approve the minutes of, get back to the meeting of December second, twenty-fourteen, the work session of December ninth, twenty-fourteen, and a special meeting of December ninth, twenty-fourteen. Okay, so the mayor made the motion, Mr. Ilinski was first at seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Unfinished business. Ordinance number six oh six, repealing and replacing chapter two forty-eight, Fire Department of the Cottonwood Municipal Code, second and final reading. Mister Kirk, or Mister Chief Kirkendall.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The, this ordinance would repeal and replace chapter two point four eight of the Cottonwood Municipal Code. It contains the enabling provisions for the Cottonwood Fire Department, primary changes from the previous, which was written many years ago for a volunteer fire department. The, some of the major changes, as we discussed last time, are changing the official name from the Cottonwood Fire Department to the Cottonwood Fire and Medical Services Department to better reflect what is eighty percent of our business now is, is emergency medical or medical calls. It also allows the fire chief to adopt policies and procedures and SOPs for the department, as long as they're consistent with all applicable laws and with the directives of the council and city manager. It eliminates a number of, of provisions that were.
Outdated.
To do with, deal with the volunteer fire department as opposed to a fire department with a full-time professional fire chief. Questions?
Any questions or comments after a very long mayor's monologue?
I think we had a part of the discussion.
We did, we had a very long discussion.
And you did the first reading.
Any comments from members of the public on this item? If not, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve ordinance number six zero six, repealing and replacing chapter two point four eight, Fire Department of the Cottonwood Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy Clerk, please read ordinance number six oh six by title only.
Ordinance number six oh six, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending chapter two point four eight, Fire Department of the Cottonwood Municipal Code. Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item ten, new business. Thanks, Chief. The following items are for council discussion, consideration and possible legal action. Resolution numbers two seven seven two, authorizing the submission of an application for a loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona to refinance certain outstanding water system revenue bonds and to provide funds for two water system capital projects. Mister Rodriguez.
While this warms up, Mayor, Council, with us today, we have Grant Hamel, Managing Director from Stifel Nichols, Nicholas. And we're here to ask council to approve resolution twenty-seven seventy-two to authorize myself to submit the application for a, to WIFA. Wanted just to touch base that WIFA, and in case you're not aware, the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, which is called WIFA, makes low-interest loans to local governments for water and wastewater projects. They also make loans to refinance projects if there is additional money for additional infrastructure improvements. We're looking at going, looking at proceeds of approximately eleven million, five hundred thousand dollar from WIFA. Recommended that the city obtain WIFA's Drinking Water Revol, for Revolving Fund. We will be using ten million, four hundred thousand approximately to retire the two thousand and four MPC water bonds that we currently have that have become callable. This has been, this, all of this was discussed during our, has been discussed over the last few years during our budget processes, it's finally coming to fruition. As you may recall, we purchased these water companies in two different issues, the two thousand and four included Cordis Lakes, Clemensaw and Verdi Santa Fe. Those are ones we're refinancing, and we're adding a couple of other projects that attune about one, one, one million, two hundred fifty thousand. About a million of that, one million, two hundred fifty thousand would go to adding an improvement to the Amiga Street before we actually do the, the, the street itself. There's some work that needs to be done there. And then the other two hundred fifty thousand dollars would be to extend the line from Skeet Hills over to, uh, and connect over in the right, right side of Clarkdale area, so we can take, get off of their Haskell Springs, which is, we're putting a bit of a burden on them. And we've talked about doing that for some time, we want to make it come to fruition as soon as possible. We, Grant Hamel has been our financial advisor for many, many years, I've been here for, going on sixteen years, and he was here before then, and he's, he's always advised us on, on how best to finance issues. And so he's got a presentation he'd like to do for the council, and we'll go ahead and take some questions either during the presentation or shortly thereafter.
Thank you very much, Rudy, for that introduction and, and nice overview, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as to why I'm before you this evening, and I have to say it's a pleasure to come up to the city this evening and, and come across to Main Street and see the beautiful decorations and music, it, it really brightened my day. So it's a pleasure to be here, and Rudy provided an excellent introduction to the topic I'm here to discuss with you this evening and provide a little bit more detail with regards to this financing opportunity through the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, or WIFA, is how it's commonly referred to. And as Rudy mentioned, the objective of this application is really twofold. One, as, as Rudy mentioned, fund the construction costs of two new water system capital projects. And secondly, and I think very beneficial to the city, a application to refinance some of the outstanding revenue bond debt that was issued in two thousand and four to finance some of the private companies that really was the origin of the Cottonwood Water System, at least initially. And of course, there were additional systems and improvements made beyond two thousand and four. Rudy touched upon a couple descriptions of WIFA. I would just like to add a few more for those of you that may not be familiar with this organization. WIFA is an independent agency of the state of Arizona, and they're authorized to finance the construction, rehabilitation and improvement of drinking water, wastewater, wastewater reclamation and other water quality facilities and projects. WIFA eligible projects involve certain construction requirements, including Davis Bacon federal wage requirements, which can lead to higher project costs. This, of course, is something that Roger and Dan in the utility department are very familiar with. As Rudy mentioned, WIFA offers borrowers in Arizona below-market interest rate loans, which I'll be speaking to in my presentation, which I believe, based upon current market, market conditions, offers a very attractive refinancing opportunity to the city. And finally, WIFA lending is aimed primarily at new utility projects. They are typically not focused on refinancings because refinancing debt does not really necessarily help accomplish their objectives of trying to assist municipalities with water and wastewater system improvements and efforts to improve the environmental quality of their projects. So, our, our initial interest, Mayor and council, was really in the debt refinancing area, but then we found out that they're not willing to refinance debt unless the application is accompanied by an application for new money, new project financing as well. And then finally, for cities and towns having a population of less than fifty thousand, there is no bond election requirement for WIFA. The only required action is also authorized, authorization through council resolution. And, Madam Mayor, I won't, of course, go into detail, but these are the projects that were described in the initial application to WIFA, and that I'm sure staff would be more than happy to respond to any questions from you in regards to that. And Mayor, members of council, this is a flow chart that I put together that I think fairly represents what we're looking to undertake through this financing process. And I would say all of the descriptive information above that horizontal line represents the sources of money that we are looking to be available to accomplish everything below that line. So, what we're, what we're starting with here is the WIFA loan proceeds along with the Series two thousand and four Debt Service Reserve Fund. This is a reserve fund that was established by the city when those bonds were issued in two thousand and four. After we complete our loan with WIFA, the bulk of the proceeds are going to go into an escrow account. This is an account comprised of US government securities, and these securities will be funded in an amount to retire all of the outstanding Series two thousand and four revenue bonds, which is just over ten million dollars presently. Secondly, the improvement, the, I'm sorry, the dollars from the loan will also be applied to the, the two water projects that, that Rudy described earlier. Third, there may be a, a WIFA loan debt service reserve requirement. That's not certain, but typically, when they lend money to municipalities, they, they oftentimes require a reserve fund as well. And then finally, there'll be some legal and advisory and banking fees associated. To the water system. This blue area represents the bonds that we are looking to refinance, and these were the bonds issued in, in two thousand and four to acquire three private companies. It's the Verdi Santa Fe, the Clemensaw Program, I'm sorry, the Clemensaw System and also Cordis Lakes. And then, of course, there was some additional money for system improvements. And these bonds represent about thirty-two point six five percent of all of the city's water revenue bond debt, which totals just over thirty million dollars. But remember, a portion of these bonds that were issued in two thousand and six were the benefit, were to the benefit of the Clarkdale portion of the Cottonwood Water Works System, which represents thirty percent of this amount of debt outstanding. So the total amount of debt without the Clarkdale bonds is twenty-four million, four hundred and eighty thousand. I'll pause here, Madam Mayor and Council, to see if there's any questions with regards to that.
There are. I just don't, so we're not refinancing Clarkdale's part of it?
We're not refinancing any of these bonds at this time because when those bonds were issued in two thousand and six, they did not have a call date until two thousand and sixteen. Now, as we approach that call date, similar to where we are now with the two thousand and four bonds, we will be for, we will be before council again with the prospect of doing the very same transaction for the two thousand and six bonds.
Their company was purchased with the second batch?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's why they're.
This is strictly in regards to the two thousand and four bonds, yes.
You got that, Tim?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Are those other bonds also revenue bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
They are secured by net system revenues of the water system.
So I have a question, and I'm, you'll probably get into it, but, so if we're refinancing these through WIFA, then the, the two thousand and four bonds?
Right.
Those revenue bonds require, I think, one, one point three five percent debt service ratio?
Current, yes.
So, through WIFA, will we not have that same requirement?
We would have a coverage requirement, and that's an excellent question, but the requirement that WIFA will require is less than that. It's not one point three five, and I, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you the exact number, but I want to say.
Good question.
It's around one point two times, so it's not, you know, significantly less, but it is less and therefore more easily achievable than where the current coverage is at.
I just, I ask because we, you know, we set our rates based on that coverage amount, so I'm just curious how this refinancing will affect how we set our rates in the future.
So how will it impact, like, our rating? Like with, because didn't they downgrade us because of that one point three five ratio at the time?
There was a downgrade of these bonds primarily because of that coverage ratio not being achieved. And I think with the rate adjustments, that is achievable, and with this refinancing, it is, it is even more achievable, Madam Mayor. And I have a, a schedule that, that looks to that as well.
So will they raise our credit rating now, possibly because of that?
Keep in mind, once these bonds are extinguished, the only bonds left to evaluate are these two thousand and six bonds. And it is possible that they could revise the rating upward with those bonds, not really just through this refinancing effort, but looking at the totality of the system, what the increased rates represent as far as additional revenue. And they could, you know, very well upgrade those bonds. Now, whether they do that before we pay them off a few years from now, it, it's difficult to say. But, but, but this is moving in the right direction for that to happen.
So I read somewhere that we were going to save like one point five million dollars in interest?
In just a second.
Okay, so my question is, um, I forgot it. So I'm sure I'll think of it as you're going along.
Yes, yes.
Great, I have, I have a question, but even regardless of, of the, us, us refinancing the ten million dollars, the twenties still, still maintain to one point three five, and until those are refinanced, then the one point three five still stands.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Oh, my question.
I was sure, I'm sorry, that's correct. I just wanted to make sure if one would, if they would, if one would kind of wash the other one out or something, if, you know what I mean? If it's a one point two and one point three five, then does that equal one point, whatever the math is on that, you know?
Well, the covenant that was made in two thousand and six was that as long as these bonds remained outstanding, the net system revenues would always be maintained at that one point three times coverage level.
Okay.
That would be regardless of the fact that these bonds have been replaced with the WIFA loan that has itself a lower coverage requirement.
Okay, that is just my question.
So did, my question that I just remembered was, did it impact us when you were doing this work to refinance these bonds due to the fact that we were downgraded?
That's a very good question. We have not have, had any recent communications with the rating agencies because, one, we're, we're still at the application stage with, with, and there's some additional requirements that they have to do the refinancing that Steve Horton and other members of staff are working on to make sure that we qualify to be able to do the refinancing. But certainly, I think as, if we're successful and as the dust settles on the refinance, we would certainly at some point want to visit with the rating agencies and share with them some updated information with regards to the debt service savings that came about from this transaction, and also what our projected coverage is with regards to the new rates and charges that are in place. So, I, I do have a schedule, which is the, the beginning of that analysis that we'll continue to refine with staff as, as this process goes forward, if the council elects to, to do that. Okay. Okay, and then, again, this is just a little bit more detail on this outstanding debt. As you can see, $10,40,000 outstanding, and as you can see from these interest rates, the average interest rate of these bonds, Madam Mayor and Council, is 4.82%. And these are the 2006 bonds that we are not touching for the time being because, as you can see, they're non-callable until 2016. But as we get closer to that date, we will definitely look at taking out these bonds at a lower interest rate as well. Okay. Now, with regards to the projected savings from this transaction, the 2004 bond debt service is represented by this column number one. And as you can see, it's approximately $950,000. One of the advantages of working with WIFA is that they are a AAA-rated agency, so when they sell debt to fund their program, they're able to borrow at very low market interest rates. On top of that, because they benefit from some federal funding for both drinking and wastewater, they're able to subsidize loans to communities like Cottonwood and offer you what they call a below-market interest rate, which is extremely advantageous. Now, remember earlier I said one of the downsides to taking WIFA loan money is that you have Davis Bacon wage requirements? So if you have a big labor-intensive project, the labor costs are going to be higher because of that, but the financing costs are going to be much lower than what the city could presently do on its own. So what we did is estimate what the WIFA loan debt service would be, and as you can see here in column four, this is, of course, all subject to market conditions, but the debt service would be approximately $850,000 per year. So the savings, we estimate at this time to be in this column totaling about $1.8 million over the remaining life of the bonds. Now, $1.8 million translated in today's dollars is a little bit over $1.5 million. So of course, by reducing your debt service by this amount, that improves your coverage going forward. And the one thing that WIFA will not do is extend your debt beyond where it currently is. I mean, some clients of ours say, "Well, our bond debt only goes out to '25, 2025. Can we put it out 40 years and really reduce our debt service costs?" WIFA won't do that. They'll stick to the original timeframe. Now, the estimated interest rate from WIFA today, subject to change, of course, based on market conditions, is about 2.8%. So effectively, if we were to do the transaction today, we're going from 4.8 down to 2.8.
Wow.
A very attractive difference. Okay. So what is the timetable of key events? This is today's date, the city council approval of this debt authorization, Resolution 2772. We submit our application to WIFA to get on their project priority list. Their next meeting is in February, on February 18th. That will be when the board puts, decides to put the Cottonwood project on the project priority list, and they also approve the project for funding. At that time, we would finalize the loan sizing, structure, and legal documents, and establish what the subsidized loan rate would be from WIFA. The loan closing would likely be in the March-April timeframe, and at that point, the proceeds would be put into an escrow account to retire the 2004 bonds on July 1 and to do, and deposit to a project account to reimburse the city for the two water projects that we talked about earlier. May or, in May or June of 2015, call notices would go out to the owners of those 2004 bonds, saying that the city intends to pay those off on July 1, and on July 1, 2015, the escrow account that I spoke about earlier would mature, and the proceeds in that account would be used to pay off all of the $10,40,000 of bonds. And effectively, at that point, those bonds are, they are extinguished and no longer on the books, if you will, of the City of Cottonwood. Okay, one more page, Rudy. This is impossible to read, obviously, on the screen, but what this page represents and what we're going to be sharing with staff, and I apologize, Mayor, there's a lot of data on this, and it is in your package, if you want to review your package in your package, but what this represents is our projection of what the debt service would be on your debt following the WIFA loan and the retirement of those 2004 bonds, plus the added debt service associated with the new projects. And taking that into account and projections of system revenues, we expect that the coverage would jump to about 1.5x from where it is today. So we're definitely seeing an improvement in that, but that is largely going to be driven by system revenues, not so much debt service, but certainly savings and debt service improves that coverage ratio. And that gets you, of course, well above the 1.35x and sets us up to be able to pay off the '06 bonds, which are larger and derive more savings, assuming interest rates a year or two from now stay reasonably low. I expect they'll be higher than today, but those bonds will still be attractive to refinance because the interest rates are much higher than where interest rates are today and where I think they're going to be a year or two from now. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Pratt?
Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I've just got a quick question, just for clarity. Clarify something for me. Tonight, we would just be authorizing the submission of an application. It doesn't mean that that would actually get funded or approved.
That's correct, in that the actual debt authorization would come at another council meeting and another resolution. This is simply the application stage that we're at now for us to be able to make the February meeting. They have meetings, I think, every other month, and that will be the meeting to get on the project priority list and for the board to say, "We will fund this project."
I've got kind of a follow-up to that, then. So if tonight we said, "Yeah, we're going to authorize going forward with the submission of an application," and then WIFA did approve it, they would have to come back to council again for us to approve a second time, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So it seems to me that this is a good idea, that we're not committing ourselves to anything by going, by voting for it this evening?
Right, and as we get closer to February, then we know what interest rates are, and we know, what we don't know is how much subsidy is WIFA willing to give the city. There's a lot of factors that go into that.
Okay.
And of course, we're going to emphasize the need for the most subsidy that we can get. It's based upon demographics, relative wealth of the community, hardship to tax to ratepayers, all of that, we're going to push as hard as we can because they may say, "Well, our normal rate is 2.5%, but we'll give you a 20% discount because you're good people and you need it." And that's what we're going to work with staff to demonstrate.
So if the application is approved, and it doesn't look as good as it does tonight, we could then say, "Well, let's not accept that loan."
You can, but I don't anticipate in the next three months-
Changing it much.
...interest rates will change to the point where this doesn't make a lot of sense because we're looking at a 2% difference between what we're currently paying and what we think will be available from the state.
And that is a lot of money.
That's a lot.
Considering the money we're talking about.
Again, the estimate is $1.8 million over the life of the loan, or about $1.5 million in today's dollars. And of course, we can refine that as we go forward, but if it ends up being $1.2 million or $1.1 million, it's still a pretty attractive transaction.
Certainly looks like it.
Save a million would be good. Questions or comments? Mr. Randy, you understand all of this very well.
I think I got it, I think I have my head around it.
Okay. I would ask for comments from the public. Would the public like to comment on this item? Okay, if not, Mr. Pratt, you have your finger up.
I move to approve Resolution 2772 and to authorize the Administrative Services General Manager to submit an application for a drinking water revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona in an amount not to exceed $12 million, and to take any additional action necessary to complete and submit the application and cause the city to be placed on WIFA's project priority list.
Second. Mr. Pratt made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up to Cottonwood tonight. We appreciated your presentation. Okay, Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2772 by title only.
Resolution Number 2772, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for a drinking water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, WIFA of Arizona. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number two under New Business, Proposed Public Works Operations Foreman Position. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're asking you tonight to consider the possibility of increasing one position currently at the city, increasing the pay to that position and as well as the duties to that position. This is not a new position. We're not asking the council to create a brand-new position, but rather elevate one employee in the Public Works Department to a foreman position. So I'd like to emphasize, it's not a new position, it is a pay raise for one position. And there's three things that kind of led us to this decision. The first is that we're going to see a, or at least we foresee, a decrease in projects over the next six to 18 months. Now, it's not necessarily, how do I want to say this? Not necessarily we're going to have less projects, we have less road projects on the horizon. We probably have an equal amount of water and sewer and a few other things coming on, but as far as road projects, we're going to see a few less. So rather than having to deal with, we have a project manager right now, we created that project manager, if you remember right, a few years ago, and it worked really, really well while we had a ton of projects going on. So rather than having to potentially do some layoffs or some reorgs within the next six to 18 months, we said, "Why don't we take this opportunity to correct that situation?" And this opportunity being, many of you know Howard Harkey, the former Public Works Maintenance Superintendent, recently retired. So we said, "Okay, while we have an open position, why don't we consider rearranging a few things? We're going to actually bring that position back to council probably in January to consider modifying that position." Very likely, what we're going to ask council to do is consider merging that position with the project management position, so giving a few more duties and combining two positions. Going back to this foreman position, this has actually been kicked around for a couple of years. The Public Works Superintendent, who was formerly Howard Harkey, that position has 12 employees directly reporting to that person. That's, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, I believe that's more than any other supervisor in the city, 12 people directly reporting to them. That's quite a few. So one of the reasons we'd like to elevate one of those 12 employees to a foreman position is they'll be able to assist the Public Works Superintendent in overseeing those 12 employees. We're actually going to work it out between them, whether the foreman oversees all 12, maybe the C, there's actually, that 12 is made up of four different crews, the grounds maintenance crew, the building maintenance crew, the streets maintenance crew, and the solid waste transfer station. So those 12 employees all report right now to the Public Works Superintendent. This foreman will help oversee those positions. This will be a very similar situation to what's going on in the Water Department today. The Water Department has Frankie Montes. Many of you know Frankie, met him, he does a great job. Frankie is what I call, and this may not be the correct title, but a working foreman. He's out there, he's with the crew, he's on the job, he's doing maintenance, but he's also overseeing and making sure a bunch of other things are getting done. That's what I see this position becoming. It's a working foreman, they're going to be out there in the field, carrying out maintenance duties, but at the same time overseeing other employees. So that's why we're bringing this forward to council right now, to see if this opportune time of Howard retiring is a good time to consider reorganizing the Public Works Department a little bit. The extra costs, I believe it's looking at about $5,000 to $6,000 in extra cost to the city. I understand that's a little bit extra for this position. You'll see after we potentially combine the, or reorganize the Public Works Superintendent position, this will be an overall cost savings to the city. We should end up eliminating one position at the Public Works Department. And again, the only reason I think that's okay is we do foresee seeing less projects within the next six to 18 months. Any questions from the council?
Questions? Any comments from the public on this item? Excuse me, Mr. Pratt?
So for this position, we wouldn't do a search. We would actually promote somebody from within?
It would actually be limited to those 12 employees.
Okay.
Correct. So we also wouldn't bring someone in from somewhere else in the city because that would, in a sense, create a new position.
Right.
It would be limited to those 12 employees. One of them could be elevated to this foreman position. One of the difficulties of this job is they're actually going to have to keep their existing duties, but we're adding on a few more duties, and obviously, we're compensating them for that.
So I thought it says knowledge, skills, and abilities, and knowledge of the properties owned by the city, so I was figuring it had to pretty much be someone from inside, and so that would probably always be true, that this position would be filled, it wouldn't be advertised outside of the city?
Madam Mayor, generally, for these kind of positions, we always advertise it internally first.
And with 12 people, you're sure to get somebody that wants to take on a little more responsibility and be able to support their family a little better by a little higher salary?
And again, I think it, yeah, it always creates, I mean, you want to try and move people up in the organization and give them that opportunity to permit. And this is, I mean, we're doing this a little bit backwards because we have a need to get this position filled with Howard's departure, but the ultimate outcome of this, which we've tried to do with a lot of different positions, is a net savings in money by, you know, giving people a little additional duties but paying them a little bit more to do it. And in doing so, we end up eliminating a position that we think we can do without.
And I'd just like to compliment you on that. I mean, you looked throughout the city and you found a way to save us some money, and that's very important, so I appreciate the fact that you analyze those things and don't just keep adding to the organization when it's not necessary.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll extend that credit to Morgan and his staff, who really looked at this and came up with a way that I think will actually make us more efficient.
If you don't mind me adding one more thing, another thing I think this will do internally in the Public Works Department is increase morale in that because you have 12 people reporting to one position, it's very difficult for anybody to move up, as opposed to normally. I think, I think I actually heard Doug say a few years ago, the kind of optimal number of reportees is like five to seven, and obviously, that's for the supervisor sanity, but it's also for, there's potential to move up. When you have 12 people who can move up, it's actually very, very rarely that anybody does get to move up to that position. And another reason is, all those people, they range at pay scales from anywhere, pay scale 11 to a 16. The Public Works Superintendent right now is, I believe, at a 24, 25. That's a very large jump. This Public Works Foreman is going to be somewhere at a 20. So it'll allow somebody to move up slightly, gain some of the skill sets they'll need, supervisory skill sets, maybe a little bit of budget, some computer skill sets, that they need to move up further. I think it's going to be very difficult for somebody to move from, say, a range 16 to a range 25, but much more feasible for somebody to potentially move 16 to 20 to 25 throughout their career. I know there's a lot of people at the Public Works Department that have been where they're at for a long time, they've served the city really well. In fact, one of the difficulties in creating this position is we have several people up there who are very qualified for this position, it's going to be a difficult choice. Should the council? Should the council?
Okay. So, Mr. Hadigee?
Are we ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
I move to authorize the creation of a public works operations foreman position at salary range 20.
Second. Councilmember Hadigee made the motion. The Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your work on that. Item three is review of potential projects for the city's fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. Scully.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This is the second meeting in a series to help the council select a project for the application for the Community Development Block Grant for next year, 2015. Purpose of the meeting tonight is to look in more detail at several of the projects that were talked about as priorities and show you what the process is for reviewing these projects. Each of them have some differences and to give you some more background on that, so that will help make the final selection, which would be in five weeks from tonight. The goal is to bring this back on January 20th and have a public hearing and look at several different projects, or possibly all of these on this list, to then make a final selection for what we go forward with an application. And based on the way the system has worked for a number of years now, it would be one project selected for an application. Just the background on this, this is, the program comes out of the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department, the HUD, department goes to the State Department of Housing. And then from there, it's just, the work gets coordinated through the regional councils, through the councils of government. So we work with Northern Arizona Council of Governments. It's a four-year cycle. And over the years, it seems like the amount that's going, we're in the small cities and towns program. It seems like due to these cycles, there's less money, more requirements. So I think that's been part of the idea is to have just one project. In the meeting in October, the council meeting, the report had 15 projects listed. And the representative from NACOG identified, I think it was seven or eight, eight or nine, possibly, other projects that were talked about for 23 or 24 possible projects that were identified. And then from there, and I want to make sure the direction was to go and look at these projects as possible priorities. So, and they cover a range, I think, of types of projects, from the community-wide facilities to neighborhood improvements to projects like the housing program that assists qualified individuals. So I think they're all projects that have merit and are good projects that provide benefits, each and every one. There's no indication tonight that there's any priorities or didn't want to present these as any recommendations. And for tonight, council, we're just looking for, make sure this is the right direction. And just to give more background on what this, so the projects were the Cottonwood Civic Center improvements, the Verde Valley Senior Center improvements, neighborhood scale improvements down in the Main and Mingus, as we call it, the smelter city. But smelter city is really just a portion of that area. It's a historic subdivision. I think they're talking about the whole Main and Mingus area with infrastructure improvements. And then the roundabout at Main Street and 10th Street going into the entrance to Riverfront Park. And that, even though that was not recommended for some reasons we talked about, I wanted to show that as part of this review process. That was the conclusion after going through these steps. And I just thought it would be good to just show you a summary of how each one of these projects was reviewed. In the process, it broke, put together a template that looks at five different parts, the requirements and criteria. And if I could just go through those, the sections of criteria, there's each and every project that are part of the CDBG has to meet one and only one of what they call national objectives. There's three national objectives. That's to projects that help low-income, low-to-moderate-income people, or elimination of slum and blight conditions, or other urgent needs, critical needs in the community. Each of these projects came in under the low-to-moderate income benefit category. And I think each of these would qualify under those categories. Then under the national program, there's a list of eligible activities. So the next step is to review, does this meet one of the eligible activities? There's quite a long list. It seems like a lot of, it's a lot bigger than what we'd even qualify for. Because a lot of those eligible activities really seem to be geared towards much more distressed communities with much more higher poverty rates and deterioration. So it kind of narrows it down a little more. And then every state has their own state priorities and goals that they put together on an annual basis. So you also have to look at the Arizona Annual Action Plan that comes out from the Department of Housing. And the projects are further, they list through a public process, low, medium, and high priorities. And so the only projects that can be selected are either medium priority or high priority. So that kind of drops out another set of categories that are low, low category. The application, or the application handbook also has a lot of detailed criteria. And in some cases, for certain types of projects, they go into further criteria. So you have to really look at the manual that describes these and make sure that there's, that all the, called threshold review. So that's, was looked at in each of these. And then finally, I think, certain projects, the cost issues. For some projects, you're just going to use these funds to just directly fund a project. And other projects, there's either choice or need are related to other bigger projects. And if you're using blending money, if it's a bigger project, all those other funds have to be secured at the time the application is put in. So it can't be contingent, getting the grant and then contingent on some other source. It's got to be documented and ready, ready to go. And so that can also, if it's, if you're trying to blend some funds on a bigger project and you don't have those other funds secured, it's going to make it difficult for it to be a good project to select. Wouldn't pass the first step there. We went through on the Civic Center project, working with Scott Man Japan, who's the city's construction management coordinator, doing a rough, a very rough outline of what could be done in the Civic Center and get some cost estimates. This is, was just a quick pass to make sure that we're in the ballpark, the things. The conclusion was, there's more than enough things and structural things and construction rehabilitation that this grant could apply to, including some issues with both the bathrooms and making those more accessible. The kitchen renovation, bathroom renovation, there's some issues with, the windows are going to have to be fixed because the big evaporative coolers are going to come out. There's three big ones and they're, they kind of sliced out a metal of these metal windows when they did it. They need to be recrafted. There's renovations on the windows. So in any case, there's more than enough for applying this to some legitimate, solid renovation issues for the Civic Center. The Civic Center qualifies under all those other programs. There was some questions that'll come up with, I know there's some funding that's already been directed towards the heating and ventilation system. This grant wouldn't be the process, even getting selected. It's late next summer to even get the award. And then it could be towards the end of next year. So that was a question of whether you wanted to try to use that. This would qualify, this grant could be used with some of that heating, ventilation upgrades. If that's already happening, this could be phased. If you do blend it, you're subject again to what was talking about, the federal labor standards and the Davis-Baptel standards. Overlay. So if you even use your own money and blend it in the same phase of a project, you're subject to all the same federal procedures. Just keep that in mind. But we spent quite, we spent quite a bit of time trying to make sure this was something that was covered. The other thing that came up in this process through NACOG with both Civic Center and the Senior Center as well as a project was to, that there should be an architect, because there's all these, so many different things going on as to oversee it or coordinate it. And that could take 10% of the construction cost. Could be as much as, depending on the scope of it, but I talked to some people, it could be $10,000 to $20,000. So that lowers the amount of funding, taking out the other administrative cost. Estimates could be $220,000 could be for construction cost, a few, $110,000. It's a pretty good amount to work with. The Senior Center made a proposal for quite a few different things. And looking at what they, how they proposed that, fit into two different eligible activity categories. One was the same major category that the Civic Center would be in, which was the community facilities. And they have a separate subcategory. Senior Centers are listed as a high priority under the state's action plan for these types of things. The two different eligible activities were the facilities themselves and what's allowable under that. And then those operational programs, the ELS program, that falls under a different category and would be a separate application. That's called the public services. So the public services category is also something you have to make a special request to the state because there's a limit total every year. Some higher criteria to meet that category. So we also looked at their list of what they were proposing and are sure that they could use all this funding as well just on the community, the facilities and structural proposals they had. They could easily accommodate this grant as well. If you go with a subrecipient, there's a whole set of other requirements they have to meet. They have to document who they are and their board of directors and their certifications and all of their articles and corporation or what. There's a long list. They have to make, there's usually a preliminary agreement between the city and a nonprofit organization, if you're working with them, make sure everybody understands who's doing what. Because you're passing the grant to them and they're doing all the grant management and they're overseeing the monthly reporting. It's not going to be turned into a city staff person to follow through every month. There's monthly reporting requirements. So you need to assure that there's an understanding of that and that they have the capacity, which is staff, qualified staff. It's also, it sounds like it's very doable in this case. There's just some unique considerations here because it's working with a nonprofit group. I think, in determining what actually is qualified in their list of requests and how it would actually fit in, would be working with NACOG into, I think they'd be happy to do a number of these things. So maybe not everything they requested would qualify as eligible. There's enough things there that would more than accommodate the total grant, I'm pretty sure. The third possible project is the improvements to the infrastructure improvements in the Main and Mingus neighborhood area. There's a category under the eligible activities. It's called the combination of public facilities. So you can mix into one application, street improvements, utility lines. And there's also some drainage, local drainage areas that were projects. This has not been completely evaluated in terms of where the things would be and what all the cost estimates are, but working with the public. There's more than enough there. And just with the drainage improvements and the water lines and this, there's some utility lines. I'm not sure what they are, but they're in a number of separate places. There's several different localized problem areas. And this area would qualify as well as the area-wide, the target area category for being predominantly classified as low to moderate income in that block group. So this is similar to the previous two cycles of projects that Cottonwood did with 12th Street and 10th Street. And except this would be the combining of the drainage improvements with some street improvements and with some utility line replacements. So that's also something that could be accomplished, with the staff and experience to do that. At this time, there's not, there's not a direct map exactly what would be there, but there's more than enough to accommodate. And I think even more, that was one of the issues that came up, some of the early cost estimates and first draft were more than what this grant was. And I think Public Works had some ideas about other sources to blend some funding with. The fourth project was the owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, which Cottonwood was involved with 12 years ago. And that cycled from CDBG grants. This is probably one of the more labor-intensive categories because it has to do with a lot of outreach, even before the application goes in. You've got to develop a leading list. You've got to go out to the public and find out, are there people interested? You've got to advertise and get people to at least fill out some initial forms of interest. If you're, once you get into the project, if it's doing the general program where they go through a process to evaluate and audit a house and see what are all the conditions, this can add up if you're replacing a roof or something. What this program is really designed for, I think nationally, is you have people that own their own home, but they're low-income. Maybe they've worked a complete career, they're retired, living on a fixed income. Maybe they've gotten a disability. They can afford to live in their home, pay their bills, you know, and do all the other things for life. But being on a fixed income or a lower income, when maintenance comes around for a building and you've got to repair a roof, it's thousands of dollars on pretty much any kind of roof. And a roof lasts maybe 25 years if you're lucky, a shingle roof, a flat roof might be less. If you've got to paint a house, if you don't paint the house, the maintenance is going to be a lot longer in the long run. And painting a house, I think, have Tim do it. He'll give you a good deal. I don't know. It could be thousands of dollars as well. Same thing with the heating and cooling system. It only lasts a year. So what happens is people have, are capable of living in their house, but the maintenance, they just don't have it. And then they're either going to have to sell out and try to find subsidized housing, or this becomes sort of a deterioration of the whole neighborhood. So this has been a very successful program. It doesn't hit as many people. You're dealing with just those people, but it has an impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Every time you help somebody in one house, stay in their house. Every time you help, you know, somebody in one house stay in their house and, and do those kinds of things where they're not able to do, uh, it has a positive effect on all the surrounding houses and neighborhoods, so. I did notice when looking up the, this last year and the, we're talking about the, uh, the annual competitive grants that CDBG does, which is one of those questions that came up, and that can go up to three-hundred thousand dollars to a community. Almost everybody, there were seven or eight proj- uh, cities in this last cycle, if there was, uh, it might have been even more, um, most of them were housing, owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. So, people were, uh, some of the smaller towns were getting three-hundred thousand dollars this year to apply separately to this, because you really need a separate, somebody to manage it, it's, uh, it's an ongoing reimbursement process and inspection process and it's, the last time the city did it, they hired, uh, there was a person ready to retire in administration position and they, uh, they had that person stay on for another year or more to just do this project. So, it's really more labor-intensive, more involvement, more commitment, more commitment upfront and through the process from staff, and really have to hustle with it to get it going. But, there could be other funding sources if that was a desirable program, or it could be this. And then, um, uh, ma- the main, the roundabout or just that whole issue about the entryway into Old Town and fixing that whole, uh, issue with the offset roads and the kids running across the street, across the road to get to the park. The cost estimate, uh, what came from the city engineer, uh, was over four-hundred thousand dollars, I think it's in your packet there. Uh, there's just more to it than just the roundabout, it's the whole traffic entry control, Main Street, the engineering, the construction, uh, I think just because there was no source of that other money jumping out, it just, that was, came from other staff as this wasn't not, this was not recommended. But, it would otherwise be a project that would qualify, we think. It serves a, a number of needs, uh, and that type of project could potentially qualify. That was the, the quick summary of where we're at now, I think, um, if you have any further questions, but also just to make sure this is the right direction for where we're at at this point, and we'll come back in, uh, through a, the public hearing in January to hopefully present something to you that's, you know, ready to be selected as for the app- the application.
They're all, they're all good, uh, well, most of them are good projects as far as that goes, uh, provide some benefit to the community, just gonna be, uh, the issue of deciding which way to go, I mean, uh, you know, I'd kinda like to see the Civic Center, uh, spruced up, I'd kinda like to see the drainage over at the Smelter City project, uh, and obviously, the, the, the housing rehabilitation is always very well-received, shall we say, uh, I think the only drawback there would be the labor intensity of, of monitoring all that versus the others, so, um, like I say, they all seem to bring something good to the community. It's not easy.
I have a question for Steve. Uh, Mr. Horton, um, if we live in the Smelter area, should we, um, ask for, uh, conflict?
No, um, you, you fall within an exception to the, to the conflict of interest. If you are a resident and you are part of a group of, of ten people, um, you're not required to recuse yourself.
Okay.
And I, I think actually the, uh, service area for this was more between Main Street and Mingus and the inside of the curve. I believe you're-
By the bakery and by the schoolhouse area?
Is that, yeah, uh, it could be around there.
That's where I am.
That's right. Did you move?
No, I'm right there in Coconino, right by Main.
Oh, okay. Yes, you're in the, that's exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Where's, there would be some-
We don't have a flooding issue there.
Oh, they do have a flooding issue.
Yeah, I remember, and I don't know if it's been corrected or not, a few years ago, there was a, a house, and I don't remember exactly what street it was on, but that gentleman would open his garage and let the water run through his garage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, I mean, there's water issues over there, there's no doubt.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Just to quickly update the council on the HVAC project for Civic Center. Um, as you may recall, we did do a feasibility study, which came back and said, yeah, it, it can definitely work. Um, we are now, probably in the next week, two weeks at the outside, there's a, uh, request for qualifications going out for a design build, to actually design and then, um, construct the HVA system in there, and we're budgeted for a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars this year for that project, just so the council has that information.
Thank you. Comments? Did I miss something?
Good projects, and I agree, it's gonna be hard to choose which one.
CDGB Bingo, the little thing and the little dovers, you know, we all-
I guess, I ha- I do have an opinion on this, one of seven opinions, I'm sure, but we have talked about the Civic Center for so long and that would be my project of choice. We just have stuck it in the background for so many years and it is used by everyone in the community and, um, every project really has wonderful merits and there, it's really hard to decide, but it's, we talk every budget session about the Civic Center and we do very little because we can't, there just aren't funds for it.
I think it's a jewel that needs to be polished enough, too.
That needs to be cared for.
It does.
Yeah, it was good to see it number one on the list, that, that's how I read it.
So, I don't know, um, basically Charlie needs direction, is that what you're asking for tonight?
The standard part of the process, the next step would be, uh, a public hearing and the notification process for that, we had that identified as January twentieth, um, and at that point, the, the standard approach is to provide a selection of several, two or more, uh, projects for consideration, so in case, uh, yeah, so that, that's where it's at. If it's, if it looks like it's heading in the right direction, then we'll provide more information on these projects and, uh-
So, we should be thinking which ones we wanna prioritize for the next, we'll have a public hearing and, basically this was just informational, so now you don't need any more direction or anything, right?
Uh, yeah, and it, and the goal is to actually select a project that can be, staff can move forward with the application process. And in some of these, there's a lot, like with, with the, just for example, with the housing rehabilitation, you have to, you know, prove a, uh, there's a rehabilitation guidelines, which is a whole document that, based on a national thing, you do that through a resolution, uh, that's a twenty-page document that talks about the program. You have to go out to the public and ask people if they would fill out a form and self-report, are they in the low-income category, and get a waiting list. Are you, do you have projects, do you have a need for rehabilitating your house? Uh, that's gonna be a lot of phone calls, a lot of one-on-one with a lot of people, and that happens before the application gets submitted in April, so.
Mr. Penn?
Yeah, but what I'm saying, tonight is mostly informational, you're gonna come back and according to what I read in the packet, on January twentieth, we will select our, our priority.
And based on that, we then kick off into whatever, if it's the street improvements-
Right.
-and you have the whole engineering program and if it's-
Well, there's a process that follows us choosing a project.
And if, uh, if it's a Civic Center, that's somewhere in there, a qualified architect who understands historic preservation and-